When you grow up, your heart dies. Just keep holding that secret code by your side. Somebody called, somebody calling. Don't let it go, don't let it go. Without somebody to hold, without somebody. I just need that body. You're fire, yeah. The way you dance with the devil tonight. You're fire, yeah. You've got that last dance look in your eyes. Just like a movie. Don't let your heart die. Don't let your heart die. You're fire, yeah. The way you dance with the devil tonight. You're fire, yeah. You've got that last dance look in your eyes. You wake up in the middle of the night screaming my brains out. Get high in the middle of the afternoon. No way, can't stop thinking about you. It's just my nightmare. What is nightmare? You call me an animal. That's just not the truth. I'm no animal. I'm no animal with you. I'm no animal. Whoa. I'm no animal. No animal with you. I'm no animal. Whoa. I'm no animal. Tough luck and it ain't enough for you, your best friend. Turn off the fear, worst enemy. I know what you want. Neon Sunset Boulevard. It's just my nightmare. What is nightmare? You call me an animal. That's just not the truth. I'm no animal. I'm no animal with you. I'm no animal. Whoa. I'm no animal. No animal with you. I'm no animal. Whoa. I'm no animal. I can't feel tonight. I will be coming home. I'll be gone here with those children of the night. Children of the night, yeah. I hear them running in the night. I hear them running in the night. I'm making some new friends. Never know it, but they're just like me. And I'm starting some new trends. You never know it, but they're gonna live me. Children of the night. Children of the night, yeah. I can't live to shine. I will be coming home. I'll be gone here with those children of the night.
Yo, 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 ladies and gentlemen. How is everybody tonight? Welcome, welcome, welcome. Can you guys hear me all right? Let me know if you guys can hear me. Am I coming in loud and clear? All right, let's see. Audio, check, check, check. I should be good. I shouldn't need to have this thing up my mouth for you guys to hear me. I should have enough power now. I got a cloud lifter for these kinds of microphones. There shouldn't be any buzzing anymore. I used to have a lot of buzzing when I would touch my mic. You shouldn't hear anything. I should be able to hold this thing and you should not hear any buzzing. So how is everybody? Welcome, everybody. Please drop a like as you're coming into tonight's town hall meeting. Welcome. I got a lot of stuff to show you guys. We're going to talk about what is coming up on the good old channel. And we're going to talk about what you guys want to talk about. I do believe we have a super chat here tonight. We've got Nick Mendez Santiago with a $10 super chat. Hey, CHH, it's been a while. It's town hall, brother. Yeah, it has been a while, Nico. I hope you're good, by the way, you know? You've been around for a while, my man. So it's always good. It's always good to see an old face in the chat. So thank you, Nico. I appreciate that. Let me give you a little something, something.
I feel like people sleep.
All right. So welcome, everybody. People will be pouring in, I'm sure. I want to welcome everybody to tonight's show. This is another town hall. If you're new to the channel and haven't been on in a while, welcome. I'm rocking my Elm Street tee tonight. So guys, I got a lot of stuff to show y'all. And of course, these town hall shows, they're really a show for me to come up here and say, what do you guys want to talk about? What's on your mind, so to speak? So let's see who we got before we get going. 3GP Bling, Dino, Usu, Saturn Video, Movie Misfits, Ryan Dog, Kevin Kruger, Nuclear Fuzz, Nuclear Fuzzant. The Substance was a visual masterpiece. I loved it. Shout out to Drum Tums review. Go check it out, everyone. Truly is the best year in horror. And we still have Terrifier 3 coming soon. James Earl Cash Jr. I'm paying my taxes, CHH. Thank you for your advice. No way I'm going back to the clink. Uh, just happy to be here. So much to break down. The Strangers 4K is the business, says Beyond the Grave Media. Zen says, yo, 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 how are you Zen? Sean Senior, how are you? Witch Hunter, how are you? Anthony O'Donnell, how are you? Ecto Violence, what's going on, player? Love your videos. Been binging them. That's awesome. Russell Rogers, how are you? Mike Mack, how are you? Johnny likes horror, not loves, he likes it. Doesn't love it, but he likes it. Just saw RoboCop 2 tonight for the first time. RoboCop 2 is a masterpiece. I love RoboCop 2. That's right, Movie Misfits. That you tell them, so I don't have to. Keith, how are you? Russell, how are you? Terrifier 3 premieres last night. Reviews seem strong. Very good. I'm happy about that. What's up, Brian Hall? Late, late horror show. Dino, how are you, brother? Good to see you. So you grabbed the Pennywise popcorn bucket and designer. You getting the Terrifier 3 popcorn bucket? I want to get the Terrifier 3 popcorn bucket, but I don't want to order it online. I wanted to get it at, um, I wanted to get it at an actual movie theater, but I think it's online only. You know, I don't know. Maybe it's online only. So guys, let's, let's talk about tonight's show. Let's talk. So I got some stuff I want to show y'all. I got a lot of stuff I want to sneak peek to you guys about what we got coming up. And I want to talk to you guys. I have a life lesson for tonight. A life lesson for the show. We got a $2 super chat. Obviously, guys, if there's a super chat, I'll stop what I'm doing and I'm going to go to the super chats. Brian Trash with a $2. Howdy, CHH. Brian, it's good to see you. It's good to see you, Brian. Thank you so much. And with that, I say.
I feel like people sleep.
Feel like they do. I really feel like they do. Okay, guys, so we got a lot going on. First things first, I did get my, uh, my Pennywise bucket, which I really like. I like this one a lot. I was going to grab a child's play one for a friend of mine, but it was cracked to hell. And it looked cool. It's just, it's literally a Chucky head. So if that's what you want, you can get a Chucky head. I got the Terrifier LED. I was wanting that, so I finally found the Terrifier LED. Um, so guys, I want to talk to y'all about something that I'm excited about. Uh, and it's an important lesson in life that I learned. So let's, let's tell the story real quick, guys. So here's the good news. I am pretty much 100 subs away from 30,000 subscribers, ladies and gentlemen. 30,000 subscribers. Um, and I mean, it's a, it's a crazy number to think about. So if you're new to this channel, you know this channel as Planet CHH. That's the name of what this channel is, Planet CHH. And for those that may not be completely aware of what Planet CHH means, it's a play on Planet Hollywood. CHH is, is what people called me, Christian Hanahara, because that's what the channel name of, this, what the channel name used to be. Um, and I was at a breaking point to where I felt like I could not, uh, continue under that name. Because when it's Christmas time, maybe I want to do like a Christmas horror, Christmas horror movies, Christmas movies on Blu-ray. I want you to own Christmas movie, this, that. Maybe I want to talk about the new, uh, 4K release of like a Stallone movie. Maybe, but I couldn't under that name. And I came to a breaking point to where I wanted to stop the channel. Hence, the branding changed completely. And I went, I went for it full-fledged. And I would tell people, this doesn't mean that horror is going away. Horror is a massive part of my life. But maybe now and again, I want to review Sudden Death from Jean-Claude Van Damme, which we did the other week. So I did that. It ended up being the best decision I could make. Then I was actually able to brand myself a little bit. So that worked out. But there's something else that I went through about a year ago. Okay? So about a year ago, guys, I was at another breaking point with YouTube. Let me preface by saying this to everybody in the chat. For everybody that has a channel and for everybody that wants to have a channel, or if anybody that's got something in their life that they want to do, and you know, you're working hard at it, here's a life lesson I want to, I want to throw at you guys. About, you know? And again, guys, once I get through my spiel, we're going to get to all your guys' comments and questions. About a year ago, I stopped and was just looking at my channel. And I said to myself, I was like, man, I have been doing this for 11 years. And I see people that start YouTube after me, before me, that sort of thing. And some people just, they blow right past me. How, how, how long do I have? How long am I going to keep at this to make minimal progress? And I would get bitter. I would look at people that I looked up to on YouTube, people like Pizzol and others that have done very, very well for themselves on YouTube. It's not a competition, but at the same time, I would say to myself, why am I not, why am I not moving forward? Why am I not progressing? Why is it, why is it always baby steps on my channel? I feel like it's baby steps. What's wrong with me? Right? I've been at this for a long time, guys. And I started to get really bitter. Not angry at people, but I would start to get a little bit bitter. That's the God's honest truth. And one day I just kind of snapped and I looked myself in the mirror. And I said, whose fault is it that something's not going your way? The answer is, the answer, guys, is me. Okay? And so about a year ago, I looked myself in a mirror and I said, if you want your channel to grow, if you want to do good things on YouTube, you need to know that you're going the full effort. You need to tell your, you need to know that you're giving it your all. Okay? And so it was about that time I stopped. I said, am I doing the best I can? The, the answer was no. The answer was no. The answer was absolutely not, Christian. You're not doing the best. And so you can sit there and complain. You can sit there and ask, why are you not where you want to be? And why are other people in a spot you think you can be in? The answer is you're not giving it your best. And I knew that was the truth. And I finally decided to just look myself dead in the mirror and admit it. And so at that time, about a year ago, I said, I'm going to put more effort into my videos. I'm going to put more effort into what I'm doing. I'm going to put more effort into growing my channel. And if it works, awesome. If it doesn't work, then that means, uh, you can't blame anybody else but yourself. So the lesson tonight, guys, is I want to say, you know, I'm proud of where the channel has gone. And the reality is, with anything you do in life, with anything you do in life, at a certain point, you can't blame anybody else. You have to be realistic with yourself. You have to stop, look yourself in the mirror and say, are you doing the best you can? And once you start to go that route, guys, I'm going to tell y'all, I'm going to tell y'all the truth. Once you start to go that route and accept, um, you know, true responsibility for your actions, that's when you'll see growth. That's the God's honest truth. That's when you'll see more progress on your end. Because at the end of the day, you're in charge of your own destiny. That's the way I look at it, right? You're in charge of what you want to do and how you want to do it. So I just want to say, take that life lesson right there, guys, and put it into whatever it is you have going on in your life. Stop looking around blaming other people. Stop looking around and saying, why are they in this position and I'm not? And life isn't fair at the same time, but on the same token, look yourself in the mirror and be honest with yourself. Are you doing the best you can? And once you can admit to yourself the truth of that, you will grow. I don't care what it is you're doing. I don't care if it's YouTube. I don't care if it's drawing. I don't care if it's painting. I don't care what it is. Continue to work as hard as you can. Before you hit upload on anything, before you post anything, before you do anything, stop and say, is this the absolute best I can do? So that's the life lesson tonight, guys. That's the life lesson tonight. So I want to say that I'm very proud of where we're at. And, and the sad thing is, I wish I would have pushed this much into everything five years ago. And where, where could we be now? Because I'd never want this channel to be a channel that, you know, turns into something to where I feel like there's a distance between me and the audience. And I'm, you know, becoming something I'm not. I always want this to be a hub that's like, well, I can go to Christian's channel and I'm, I'm not going to get preached at. I'm not going to get talked at. I'm going to go to a channel with a guy that wears baggy t-shirts and just wants to chill and have a conversation with me. That's what I always want this channel to be. So, you know, as we grow, know that the fans of this channel and what I do, you're going to get more of that. I'm just going to put, I'm going to continue to evolve and put more effort into what I am doing, ladies and gentlemen. So that's the life lesson for tonight. No, I'm not leaving YouTube. Why is, why are people, I'm not leaving YouTube. I'm saying, I wish I would have pushed harder years ago. And I'm finally happy that the channel is doing good. Who's saying I'm quitting YouTube? God almighty, is this what you guys are thinking? I'm, I'm leaving YouTube? No, no, guys. The reality is, um, the channel is finally doing good. And, and my, my whole point of this was I stopped bitching and complaining and saying, why is this person here and I'm not? I stopped and I said, I'm going to actually give it my best foot forward. Um, so who's, who's saying I'm leaving YouTube? Anyway. Um, anyway, thank you guys for all being here tonight. So, uh, for everybody in the chat, welcome to the show. Uh, we have 110 people in here. If you can drop, uh, you can drop a like, that'd be great. So guys, check this out. Uh, tomorrow, you're going to get probably this video. Actually, I'm going to ask for the people in the chat tonight. The people in the chat tonight, you get to decide. Tomorrow, do you guys want to see the Paramount Scares Volume 2 box set? That I will be doing two videos on, two! Listen up. Listen, everybody, before you freak out. You're going to get a video on the box set. By the way, this was sent by Paramount. I'm not going to hide that. This was sent by Paramount for me to review. You're going to get a video on the box set itself, uh, looking at everything inside. And then, don't worry, you will get a separate review on Friday, the 13th, Parts 2's 4K. That's the bottom line. You will get a separate video on the 4K of Friday, the 13th, Part 2. Or do you guys want to see this for tomorrow's video? I finally got my Severin package. Do you guys want to take a look at that tomorrow? Let me know down below what you want to see. Uh, we got a $5 super chat from the one and only Dino from the Late, Late Horror Show. So happy to see the growth and the fun you were having. I was there back many years ago. Much love, my friend. Cheers, Dino, and congrats to you, dude. I'm so happy for you as well. God bless you and I appreciate the donation.
I feel like people sleep.
I, I, I agree, Brandon. I do feel like people sleep. All right, so what are people saying? Um, you know what? I, I'm going to say that I agree. I am a patriot. I really am. My brother served in the United States Army for, for many, many years. And, um, I, I, I'm a patriot. I agree. Actually, that doesn't make me a patriot. That makes me the brother of a military personnel. But I love this country and I, I, I am a, I am a patriot. I'm going to take the compliment. I'm going to take the compliment. Um, let's see. Now, let's see. Okay, Severin, Paramount Scares, Severin, Severin, Paramount Scares, Severin, Friday the 13th. If you say Friday, 13th, Part 2, I'm going to assume that means she's going to do the Paramount Scares stuff. Paramount, Severin, uh, scares. Can, go for it, Zen. I love your profile picture, Bunny's cool. I'm a pa, I'm not a patriot. I've got a funny, uh, I've got a funny KFC story. Um, thank you so much from Screen and Shell. Hard, hard to find time to put out content with work and life as well, but you got to hustle to get where you want to be. Keep up the great work. Thank you so much. Severin, it, it looks like it's pretty close. Okay, Paramount's coming, coming in hot. Paramount is coming in hot. Paramount's winning. My vote for Friday, but you have to make sure they have the flash in the credits. I tell you what, Midnight's Edge After Dark, I'm going to play the opening credits in the review. So there you have it. Uh, KFC is. Uh, thank you for the compliment. I appreciate that. Um, so guys, we've got that. I went to, uh, I went to, uh, my local video store today. Check this out. We picked up Shrooms. We picked up Shrooms on DVD, Digital Video Disc from 2007. Uh, I'm excited to revisit this one. So this was one of the first movies I saw on Netflix back when Netflix came out. Shrooms. We also picked up The Book of the Dead. This can't be good. We also picked up Oculus Mike Flanagan in WWE. This was the WWE Films, wasn't it? Wasn't this WWE? Yeah, WWE Films. Blumhouse and WWE. Look at that. Oculus. I'm excited to revisit that. I got this because it's a rental exclusive. We got The Pumpkin Carver. A Gory Good Time. This came out in 2006, The Pumpkin Carver. We got Night of the Living Dead: Resurrection. This has to be one of the worst movies probably ever, but hopefully it's really bad and I can do a video on it, uh, for the Bargain Bin Living Dead series. We've been doing that. I got a review coming out soon for the convent, the standard version, which probably is what most people will get because they had the Audacity Synapse to charge $50 for this movie with a slip cover when it first came out. $50. Uh, and then we also have the 4K for Link, the Killer Monkey, the Killer Chimp. And Experiment in Terror. So busy, busy times over at Planet CHH. We got a lot going on. Um, uh, let's see. Uh, what are people saying? Uh, Midnight Edge is, does, uh, that channel, this channel name does sound familiar. Midnight's Edge After Dark. Uh, somebody was saying they like the, uh, here we go. Zen was saying, Midnight Edge, your interviews are so entertaining. Loved the Gary Tonaclepp and Adam Marcus ones, listened multiple times. Midnight, that sounds so familiar. Let me go to, let me find that channel. Let me see. Uh, oh, I'm subscribed to this channel. I've watched Midnight's Edge After Dark. Very, very nice. Yeah. Cool. Yeah, I'm subscribed to Midnight's Edge. Very, very cool. I've watched your videos before, dude. Very, very nice. Uh, let's get back to work. Let's see. It's crazy how much I can remember covers of movies from the blockbuster days just burned into my mind. I, I know, that's what's crazy. I, I have, uh, I remember who, I, I remember this so vividly. Who, who, who forgets this? You know? Amazing. So, yeah, guys, so I'll, I'll, if you're, let, 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 let me say this really quick. This is the last sales pitch I want to say tonight, guys. Listen, so listen up. Check this out. If you guys want to see all these videos quick and fast and you don't want to wait for the rigmarole of a video coming out this day and waiting a day or so, if you sign up for the Patreon on my channel, you can ask any of my patrons. They'll tell you, I flood my patrons with early access videos. I work a swing shift. So when I'm on graveyard, let me, let me, let me tell you guys this. Let me just pitch you guys this real quick. After I get done with this, I'm going to go settle down for an hour or so, watch some TV with the wife. Then all night, I'm going to be filming Paramount Scares. I'm going to be filming the Severin box set. Those are going to get uploaded to Patreon, so you can see them, you could see them as early as in the morning, both of them. Then I'm going to watch opera and have that uploaded. And I'm going to watch Friday, the 13th, Part 2. All that stuff is going to be uploaded before Sunday. And those videos won't come out till Thursday, Friday of next week. So, you know, if you want to, if you want to do the Patreon, if you could sign up as low as, little as a dollar, guys, you're going to get all those videos literally within 24 hours because I'm going, I'm getting to work after this, okay? So that's that. I just want to, I just want to pitch that to you guys. If you're, if you're, uh, if you're, if you want the content fast and you want it, I mean, ask any patron. I have people that'll tell me, it's like, dude, I'll wake up and you uploaded four videos. I'm like, that's what I do, man. I work. I treat this as a job. Uh, look at, look at Beyond the Grave. He says, can confirm. You can't even keep up with the CHH Patreon. Uh, yeah. Uh, thank you so much, Horrororman. Appreciate that. Oh, yeah, CHH drops all his videos as soon as they're done. Sometimes three or four videos and what'd I say? Support the dude on Patreon. And if, just give me a shot. Just try me out for a month. It's a dollar. You want to, go for a dollar. Just, just try me out. Just try me out. Anyway, guys, listen. Uh, so that's what we got going on, on the channel. I gave you guys my speech. Uh, I, I'm very proud of the, of the videos. And without the audience, uh, you guys, without you guys, I'm not, it's not worth it. There's nothing for me to do. So I appreciate the old school viewers. I appreciate the people that have been with me for about five, six years. And I appreciate the people that are finding the channel. You're all equally as important to me. Anyway. 30K push, that's right, 30K. We're going for it. Thoughts on the Midnight Hour TV movie from 1985? Great question. I, that's a movie that I think most people want to own. The problem is, the problem with that movie is I think all the music in it is stopping it from being licensed. So the movie can't really come out because it can't get licensed easily. Uh, now I've watched the movie on YouTube. I don't, this was a couple of years ago. I don't know if it's still on YouTube. It probably is, but I'm a big fan of the movie. I really enjoy the movie. So I'm a huge fan of Midnight Hour TV. I really wish it would come out on physical media some way, somehow. Some way, somehow. But there's a lot of different bands and it, it'd be a nightmare probably to get the approval. Any Severance releases you can recommend? Seen bits and pieces of Cemetery Man and I inserted in collecting Severance films? Any Severance releases you can recommend? Seen bits and pieces of Cemetery Man and I inserted in collecting Severance films. I can tell you one movie I highly recommend is a movie called Midnight. It is a video nasty directed by John Russo, the writer of Night of the Living Dead. And as a matter of fact, in my box, I have the slip cover for Severance, uh, Midnight that they did. I got it for $4, the slip cover, and it's really nice. I'm excited about that. Um, so I, I recommend Midnight. I'd recommend, uh, The Beast Must Die, a 70 psychedelic werewolf flick. That's really good. Um, I'd recommend The Church. I'd recommend, um. I'd recommend Skinner. Starring Ted Raimi. Is a really dark comedy slasher. You know? Uh, so yeah, there you have it. Do you think Scream Factory's October announcements are kind of disappointing so far? Yes and no. I mean, there were a few things that I was excited for, like Land of the Dead, big time. Um, I don't remember offhand what else they had. What was it? It was a lot of re-releases, right? It was, it was, uh, it was Land of the Dead. It was Drag Me to Hell. It was. Um. You guys have to remind me. I covered it on my channel, but I don't remember. I don't remember what else it was. Y'all, y'all remind me. Um. What are your thoughts on The Last Temptation, uh, Alice Cooper album? Ah, The Last Epic Records album. Uh, Last Temptation is great. I'm a huge fan of it. It's Me is a great ballad. Um, Bad Place Alone is classic. Um. You Are My Temptation is such a haunting track. I love it. I love it, love it, love it, love it. What's your opinion on Nightmare on, on the 13th floor Wheels of Terror movie? I don't remember if I've seen those TV movie. I don't think I've seen those, Alex. Ma- Ma- uh, Mason, how are you? Good to see you, Mason. I've been seeing Frogman. Yeah, guys, go support Frogman if you can. Uh, I, I did the big bundle that they did. Uh, they've been, I've been a sucker for those big bundles that they've been doing. So. Uh, yeah, I'm excited to see, uh, Frogman. I heard it was a pretty interesting found footage movie. So. Yes, I love Halloween three. Big fan. Oh, you have to tell me what happened. Shell Factory blocked me from ordering from their website. You have to tell me what happened. Please tell me. Uh, man. The, wait up, the Hamletville Horror Remake can't be October because I, I got that a week or so ago from Amazon. There's no way that was October. This is a great question. Why do you think Lionsgate sucks so bad with putting stuff out on 4K like Scream 4, House of Thousand Corpses, Saw 2 through 7, and Rob Zombie's Halloween? I just talked about this on today's You Need a Horror Podcast episode. So. I think the issue is they continuously put all this stuff out on Blu-ray and I think a lot of it just still can, sells very well, and they may not feel the need to. And it's a double edged sword. Like if they stop, if, 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 like, you know, they did last year, they did like these 50, 60 style artworks for a lot of horror movies they put out, and they were really cool. And they did one for Rob Zombie's Halloween one and two, and it probably sold like crazy. So they were like, oh, well, this is still selling them. What's the point of, what's the point of, you know, doing this a different, like upgrading this to 4K? We don't need to. The sales aren't justifying that we would need to do that. That could be part of it, or they just don't want to, they may not want to spend the resources to do it. I don't know. Um, I'd like to see the sales reports on Saw. I can't imagine that sold bad, Zen, when Saw came out. Um. I don't know. It's a great question. And I think the answer could be a silly answer, like, oh, we don't know. Like if you talk to somebody that works there, that's in charge of home video, it could be something as silly as that, man. I just don't know, but it's, it is a shame. It is a shame. I think a lot of people want to see some of these, like Saw two and three would be sensational in 4K. But what do they do? They continuously, they can, they, they put out another box set of Saw this year with, uh, with the release of Saw X. Which I ended up getting that really cool steel, well, Saw X got a 4K. So, but that's different. That's during a release of a film. It's like, they have to do the home video, uh, restoration regardless at that point. So stuff that comes out now, they'll probably, I think stuff that, like, you'll notice, like when Three from Hell came out, that got a 4K, but that was because they were, they had to do the process of making the home video release anyway. So I, I think it's factored into the budget of releasing the movie as opposed to, um, going, I don't know. That's the only thing I can think of. If you'll notice, new stuff that comes out, we'll get a 4K from Lionsgate and very sparingly are some of these other titles getting 4Ks. And you'd think some of the titles that you mentioned would do well, but. I don't know. It's a, it's a mystery. It is a mystery. Thank you, Shane. I appreciate that. Uh, Shane, you'll get videos tonight, brother. Just mark my words. You'll get them tonight. Love Danny Elfman, of course. I'm a big Oingo Boingo fan. How are you, Ryan? You're a cream stream when you go investigate journalists with a monster. So you, Brad, don't ask questions. Oh, man, some fun times. PP Dangler, how are you? It's always good to see the PP. That, no, 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 no. I don't believe that. It can't be that simple. It can't be that simple. You have to tell me what they said to you now. Okay, so, okay, let's say, they get, let's, you gave him a bad review on Trust Pilot, and then you said you talked shit about him on a stream. How did you find out you couldn't buy from their site? And have you tried to buy from their site? And what happened? I may have to bring you on just so you can actually talk about this to me and we can find out. If the chat wants to know, we may have to find out. That's a great question. Uh, they would definitely have to spoof, they would definitely have to spoof Art the Clown, right? They would have to spoof, uh. Uh, Michael Myers again because of the Halloween films. They would be spoofing Five Nights at Freddy's. Uh, you know, stuff like that. I love Congo. I love Congo. When's the Terror Vision Return of the Living Dead bundle stream? I've got mine ordered. Can't wait to pour some Tang into those glasses. So I talked to Brad the other day. I think he said that they just got in like yesterday. Well, I talked to him about something else and he posted on, on some website. It might've been on, I forgot where, but I saw him post that a few days ago, they got the test pressing of the lenticular slip. And then actually today or yes, yesterday or today or yesterday, they, they were getting the actual shipment of everything and they were gonna start packaging stuff up. So, uh, we should be getting a shipment probably in a week or so, tops. I can't wait, man. I'm so excited for that. Um, obviously I can't wait for, you know, I can't wait for that. So. Very excited for the Return of the Living Dead 2 bundle. That's gonna be fun. I'm glad you ordered it too, man. What's, what's, what's so cool is how those cups look like they could have came from like McDonald's in the late eighties, you know? What's my favorite Rob Zombie movie? House of Thousand Corpses. Terror Vision's a great eighties horror movie. I did too. I did too. I couldn't help myself, man. Couldn't help myself. They're definitely giving Paramount a run for their money. I'll tell you that. Retro Ryan, how are you? It's good to see you. I got the turbulence Blu-ray. We're, we're, we're a hundred away, man. I'm, I'm really, I'm really, I'm gonna give it hell to have it done within a week, you know, just continuing to do what seems to be working, physical media, videos, the, I'm so happy how, how the retro DVD Anchor Bay stuff is doing. I feel like it's, I found a pocket on YouTube right now of stuff that's really interesting to a section of physical media collectors. And, uh, what's great is I have a video that I haven't dropped yet. That's gonna be killer. I mean, there's a video that's on Patreon right now. If you guys want to go and check it out, it's called, I Hit the Anchor Pay, Anchor Bay Jackpot. And I did. I got the, I got the Wicker Man Woodbox. Got the Maniac tin. I got the, uh, the Beyond tin. I got the, uh, Evil Dead 2 tin. Uh, I got a ton of IFC Scream Factory titles from back in the day when they were doing all those. It's a great haul of stuff and really cool stuff. I got the Wicker Man Woodbox is so cool. That's available on Patreon. I haven't dropped that yet. Obviously, some of the stuff is gonna take precedent for this coming week, the Paramount scares box and Severin and opera. So I, I'm gonna review the opera disc that is available with the release right now. Not just the, and when, when the new disc comes out, I'll do a short on that more than likely, but I am gonna review the opera disc that is available right now. Uh, I think we have another super chat. Thank you, Josh Nish, Nishi? Is that how you say it? Do you like the movie Mikey? That's a great kids movie, uh, like a, like a, you know, psychological kids movie. Uh, and I believe it's MVD that did that. It was a Rewinds classic, I think. I love that movie. Yes. Thank you for the $5, man. I appreciate that. Let me give you a little something, something.
I feel like people sleep.
Uh, I agree. Thank you so much, brother. I appreciate that. Jerry, how are you, Jerry? Good to see you, Jerry. Killer Pizza, what's going on, Christian? How are you? I just got home from work, ready to enjoy the weekend. Hell, yeah. Killer Pizza, weren't you one that actually tried the, uh, Milk Duds and Butter? Am I thinking of somebody else? You know? Yes, I'm excited about Uncle Buck. I love Uncle Buck. I'm a John Candy Mark. I love John Candy. Yeah, I don't have Body Double at all, Kevin Kruger. I thought I did. You know? They told me I used abuse. So what happened? Have you tried to actually, so they email at you and did they try to, have you ever tried to buy from their website? Let me ask you that. Have you actually ever tried to do it since they told you that? And how did they tell you that? I agree we should have. I don't think I have Enemy Mine. Great. I, 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 I don't think I have. It doesn't really sound familiar. I've seen Behind Enemy Lines, but I haven't seen Enemy Mine. You too, Pack Attack. Get some sleep, brother. Get some sleep. It's, it's, it's an exciting time to get the, uh, to get this new vinyl for part two. I, you say, like, you say it like it should have happened, Austin, but I think it's the smallest of people that would actually be super excited about that. Me and you would be excited about that. Now, do I want it to happen? You damn right, I want it to happen. But I mean, you say it like it should have happened already. Nobody's really asking for that, I don't think. You know? Um. Been covering disturbing extreme on the channel. Where do you draw the line? Um, that's a great question. So where, where do I draw the line? I, I, I can. I think as, I think if a movie is rated R or M, that means an adult is or should be watching it, right? Now, with that being said, I think it's all fake. So for me, I, I, I don't, I, I can, I can watch some pretty intense stuff, but I'm the kind of person that the more intense it is, the more I kind of laugh at it. Like, I truly think Serbian film is fucking hysterical. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not kidding. It's so over the top. I find that movie to be hysterical, right? Um, I mean, if, if you know what the last scene of the movie is, it's so grotesque and so morbidly dark, I bust out laughing. I'm like, they actually did that. So I can, I don't really have a line per se. Obviously, anything that would have to do. I don't know if I have a line. I really, I really don't know if I have a line. I guess what I'm saying. Now, that doesn't mean, if I see something that bothers me, like, oh, man, that's just, that's messed up, then I just won't watch it again. Uh, but I don't know. I don't know. Like, like, I'm, I, I'm making it a point to watch Martyrs this week. I think I have, I have to find my DVD because Justin was telling me to watch Martyrs for a long time. So that's gonna be something I'm gonna watch. And I'll, I'll, I'll let the audience know if I find it to be too far over the line. Thank you, Horror Bloody Horror. I'm excited too. It's gonna feel like a big milestone. We're a hundred away. Uh, so I'm very excited. We got 132 people in here, guys. If you don't mind dropping a like on the show, I'd, I'd appreciate that. Um, I don't know if it's considered pretty rare, Chad. I think it, 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 it just, it, it can depend on any given moment. You know, you could go on eBay and possibly see four or five, then three weeks later, you can go in there and not see any, you know? Uh, in terms of finding CDs in the wild, I think they're getting harder and harder to come by. But, um, I don't know. I, I'd have to do a little research on that to see, just to check the market, you know? Uh, let's see. Uh, Movie Fans, as you know, with Friday the 13th part two, 4K is getting separate 4K release, then next year we'll get part two 4K steelbook. More than likely, I think, you know? It, it's interesting because what I was told about this whole situation was apparently part one didn't sell as well as they wanted it to on 4K. And I can believe that considering it, it was coming right off the heels of not only the Scream Factory box set, but also coming off the heels of two Paramount one through eight Blu-ray box sets, uh, as well that they did. Uh, so there was a lot of Friday the 13th just being pumped out at the time. And so they didn't want to fund releasing part two on its own. Uh, mind you, they had, they put part one out twice on 4K regardless with the steelbook. So the way they were able to get part two out is, uh. In a fight, in a, in a way that's financially viable to them, I guess, was doing the Paramount scares box set. Let me show you guys this real quick. So on the cover of this one, obviously it looks different. It's green. I do like, I, I do like that shot of, uh, Jason on the front, and I think that's his hand coming all the way across. So. And, uh, there's the magazine. Like, you guys are gonna get the video on this. And like I said, I said this earlier, but yes, uh, I just want to make it full disclosure that Paramount sent me that to review. So that's why I have it early. It was sent to me to review. Uh, but I'm going to do a separate video on the 4K of part two, a separate video, because I know that's one of the biggest things people are gonna be wondering about. They weren't that bad. Oh, my God. Uh, let's see. Alright, guys. We're at 46 minutes. We usually go about an hour with these shows, ask questions, ask away, whatever you guys want to ask. The Sadness, this is a great example. Just couldn't do it. Tried three times, only got it halfway through. I like The Sadness a lot. It is a very intense movie. There's an eyeball scene that will rock your socks. I don't know if you got that far, Midnight Geek. Uh, but like I, to me, the more over the top it gets, the funnier it gets to me. I laugh. I just laugh, which may say a lot about me, but it's fake. It's not real. So it's just like, I, I always keep that in mind, but. Yeah, that stuff just, I, I get tickled at how ridiculous some of this stuff gets. Uh, let's see. Martyrs is pretty great. Martyrs is God tier. Um, better movie, The Fun House of the Burning. The answer is unequivocally The Fun House by Toby Hooper. This is a great question from Josh. Would you like a found footage Texas Chainsaw Massacre film? The answer is yes, I would like a Texas Chainsaw found footage movie. I think it could be done extremely well. And as a matter of fact, if you look at the beginning of Texas Chainsaw, was it 03 or the original? They have like a, like a police picture of it that it's, it's haunting. It looks so good. Uh, then we got a super chat, $50. Whoa, Anthony, thank you so much. $50. Very charitable. Uh, very much appreciated. Hey, CHH, just wanted to say, I think that you are awesome and I do enjoy your channel very much. I keep thinking there's about to be a, a but in this, like, but you're also a jackass. Let me start from the beginning. Hey, CHH, just want to say that I think you're awesome and I do enjoy your channel very much. Thank you. Also, I was wondering if you're still going to do a video on 2K, 4K scan Blu-rays or 4K UHC? Um, yes, Anthony, uh, I believe that was you that asked about it. I have that written down on my notes. I'm such a mark for myself. Look at my wallpaper. I do have that written down in my notes of videos to create. The reason it hasn't gotten done yet, Anthony, I have not forgotten about it. I have not, uh, tried to not do that. As you can see, there's a lot of stuff right now that is time precedent in terms of, uh, sponsored reviews from me right now. And obviously the Severin box, I gotta do the Severin stuff. I can promise you though, Anthony, it will be recorded. Uh, soon. Like, it's on my list of things to do. Once I'm caught up, it will happen because I remember you commented that a while back on a video, and I, I think I might have responded to you, like, what a brilliant idea for a topic. Because this is a very important topic to go into about, you know, what is more important? Is the format more important? Is the scan more important? Is the restoration more important? Uh, what about the, the equipment you're using? Is, is, you know, upscale Blu-ray players, 4K players with a Blu-ray? Like, there's so many variables to, uh, picture quality and how to get good picture quality, how to get the most out of something. It's a great topic to do. Uh, and I, I haven't gotten about that. It's gonna be a long video because it's gonna, obviously gonna be a very much of a podcast style video with a lot of things to go into. So yes, I will do it, but just please bear with me because I got, as you can see, I've got a lot of stuff. because I got, as you can see, I've got a lot of stuff going on that I have to start doing now, but it's going to happen. Thank you so much for that $50. I truly appreciate it. And with that, I always say.
I feel like people sleep.
Uh, so let's continue. Um, will scream seven ever happen? It is happening. Yeah. Yeah, it's happening. Jason lives is my favorite Friday. That's a great answer. I don't know if Nick has seen solo. He may not want to see it if he reads into it. Yeah, y'all are crazy. I would do it. I would gladly do it. I haven't seen the substance Shane state. I have heard great things about the substance. Uh, this is gonna be something that I probably um stream because I these kinds of movies, I it's not a it's it's not a hop, skip and a jump from me to see these movies. I live in Louisiana. So it's difficult. It is difficult for me to get to these movies. Um, we have another super chat from Kevin Kruger with a $4.99 super sticker chat. Thank you so much, Kevin Kruger. The Woodsman was the hardest to watch for me. Kevin Bacon plays a pedo file. Several scenes with little kids made me uncomfortable. That's that's dark subject matter for sure. Um. I have not seen that, but I am definitely gonna have to look into that because it's gonna be interesting to see Kevin Bacon go to such a dark role like that. Let me write that down, Kevin Kruger. By the way, Kevin Krueger, you like my shirt? Nightmare on Elm Street. Let me let me write that down, Kevin. Alright, Kevin, let's see. The Woodsman. 2004. It's on Peacock. Wow. Directed by a female too Nicole Castle. Okay, very, very interesting. Very interesting. I'm such a crazy bastard. Okay, let's continue. Uh, let's continue, ladies and gentlemen. Where are we going next? Uh, what's the movie that actually scares you, CHH? The movie The Poughkeepsie Tapes. People can laugh at me all they want. The reality is The Poughkeepsie Tapes is a crazy found footage movie. Extremely dark. I love it. And if you guys have been paying attention on the channel, we just dropped a video talking about as above, so below, which was made by the guy who did The Poughkeepsie Tapes. I didn't know that. Hey, did anybody in the chat today watch today's video? I was super proud of that video. Uh, we did a video today talking about uh, the slasher films made by WWE Films starring Kane, the wrestler. Uh, See No Evil and See No Evil 2. I thought it was a spooky video I made. I thought it was a good video. Um, and I hope you guys check it out if you haven't. I hope you guys enjoy that video. That's the kind of stuff I want to bring a little bit more to the channel every now and again. Let me know if you guys saw that video today. Uh, dude loves movies. Don't forget to roundhouse kick the like button. I agree. Dude, uh, make sure we have 100 likes. I have not checked dude loves movies, but please make sure we have that. Kirby is supposedly getting a scream spinoff too. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Favorite Alice Cooper video? I don't know. I don't really. I don't really. I don't know. Oh, probably uh freedom, uh, raise your fist and yell that song. Yes, I have frontiers Midnight Geek from uh, second sight. I've I've watched frontiers. I like frontiers. Let's see. See no evil vids were great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I worked hard on those, man. I I those are the kinds of videos I want to introduce, but like I'm the kind of guy that like there are times where I want to be podcast style and I want to just shoot the breeze and have a conversation with you, the audience, like you're just chilling with me. And then every now and again, I want to get you guys a little creeped out. I want the creepy background music. I want to tell you guys a story because that's the way I am. I'm I'm somewhat of a dramatic guy. I can. I'm one for the dramatic arts, but I enjoy. I enjoy making those kinds of videos. So. We've got Fachi cinema here. What's going on, Fachi? Good to see you, brother. Good to see you. I think 2024 and five are gonna be the year of Van Damme. I've been seeing reports of Time Cop and other movies getting 4K announcements. So hopefully that's gonna be the case. Thank you, Kevin. Kevin checked it out. Kevin checked it out. I believe we have another super chat. Here we go. Anthony O'Donnell with a $10 super chat. I have the Sony 700 region free Blu-ray player which reports Dolby Vision and Dolby Atmos and he's a 4K UHC predictor with Dolby Vision as to watch. You got it made, dude. You got it. You got a premium setup, dude. That's amazing. Uh, wow. Very, very nice. I need to come over to your house and watch movies. What am what am I doing? Look at me with my my chump ass, you know, LEDs, uh, LCD screens, you know? I have an OLED in the living room, but in here it's a, you know, thank you so much, Anthony. God bless you for the donations tonight, man. Thank you.
I feel like people sleep.
My favorite horror movie soundtrack from all time is that's a good question. I I'd have to say, let me get a sip of this Coke Zero Vanilla. This is a good drink, y'all. My favorite horror movie soundtrack would have to be. You know what? Like, there's a there's a number of answers you can go. I love to poke fun at Halloween fanatics. But let me let me let me let you guys in on a little secret. I'm one of you guys. I I'm one of you guys. I love Halloween. Johnny Carpenter's Halloween score. If you just stop, if you stop me and say, Christian, let's just listen to the Halloween score, dude, it's a masterpiece. Halloween is one of my favorite. Halloween is truly one of my favorite scores. Um, I also love um, day dawn, excuse me, Day of the Dead. The Day of the Dead score, you know, that's a great one too. Um, I'm also a big fan of the score from um uh, you know, A Nightmare is on Elm Street, Charles Bernstein. Um, I love the score to Twin Peaks by Angelo Battleametti. I mean, who doesn't love Twin Peaks soundtrack? Are you kidding me? So many good stuff. Ben Grimm, how are you, Ben Grimm? Good to see you, Ben Grimm. What character in horror deserves a spinoff movie? I want a Dr. Satan movie. You took the words right out of my mouth and I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding. That that's that. That's a movie I think a lot of people would want to see. Is a Dr. Satan movie. As a matter of fact, I wish Rob would have done that instead of Three From Hell. Because Dr. Satan is a it's a character that age isn't a factor because obviously Dr. Satan looked like he was 300 years old in House 4000. So clearly he's not dying. If he hadn't died by the time he's 300, he's not dying, but he's 320. You know, 20 years later. So, yeah, I think that's the movie. I think that's the movie a lot of people would want to see as a Dr. Satan movie. Big time. Jerry Goldsmith is a fantastic composer. I agree. Um. Let's see. I think we're caught up with the chat, guys. We got a few more minutes. We've got a few more minutes, guys. Please drop a like on the show. Thanks for hanging out. Listen, guys, I'm never gonna come on here and preach to you guys. I just want to say, you know, I'm very happy with where the channel's at. And once I actually just stopped and said, Christian, are you putting your best foot forward? And I said to myself, you know, I'm not. And then I I just went full steam ahead. You know, we're getting a broader audience. We're reaching more folks. And you know what's really cool about the growth of the channel, guys? I'm gonna be honest with you guys. And it's not. I'm not trying to. I'm not trying to sound dramatic. But we're helping physical media. I if if you have a channel that's physical media related and you're putting out videos talking about releases, that's what I'm talking about. Who? This is something that is so important to so much of us. Because let's let's let let me let me tell you guys something. You see that over there? You know what we're doing? You know what we're really doing right there? And and mind you, guys, that is, that is, that that is 12 years of collecting, right? That is 12 years of collecting physical media. The reality is, guys, we're all trying to have a blockbuster in our home. We want to. We we love those moments of going up to the shelves and walking over and deciding what we're gonna pick and what we're gonna watch. That's what it's all about. So the more we have physical media channels out there talking about movies, talking about releases, talking about DVDs, Blu-rays and getting people excited. I were getting people excited about movies coming in on Blu-ray, DVD, 4K. That is what it's all about. Right? So I'm just, I'm I'm proud of what we have done here. I'm proud of my audience. I've I think I have. I truly think I have one of the best audiences of any YouTube YouTuber. I look at I have my audience. A lot of you guys, you ask the best questions. You guys are very intelligent. You're in the know. A lot of you guys are smarter than me at what you do. And you guys, you know, make me improve. And a lot of you guys give me incredible suggestions like we seen tonight uh, about like, hey, let's discuss this because it's something that can not only help people, but I I get to learn a little bit more when I research things. So I'm just, I'm I'm very proud and happy of what what's what's been accomplished here, guys. And it's the beauty is we're just getting started. You know, we're just getting started. So you know? I just think it's really important to, you know, at the end of the day, we all need to look ourselves in the mirror and say, why am I not doing this? And realize maybe we can do better. Maybe we can do better. And you know, I I'm a better person because of that, you know, I really am. So with all that being said, guys, at the end of the day, what I'm trying to say is Night of the Living Dead Resurrection is a masterpiece. Um. And I actually thought it would be a great idea to eat mushrooms together and watch shrooms. So if you guys want to do that, drop a like on the show. Um, I think it would be a great idea for us to eat a bunch of mushrooms and watch this together. By the way, this is a magnet DVD. Great company magnet. Um, so yeah, guys, let's go for a few more minutes. We'll answer some questions in the chat. Please drop a like on the show. Now, if we can only get the Backdoor Sluts 9 on 4K, I totally agree. It's a travesty that we don't have it. I remember renting Friday, the 13th part two from Blockbuster. I did too. I remember renting the first couple ones from Blockbuster, then I stopped and started buying them from FYE because that's when I found out they had the um uh, what kind of releases were those? The deluxe edition DVDs. Excuse me. Um, like I said, guys, we got a few more minutes. Throw you questions out. Rapid question time. Let's answer some questions. Doesn't matter what it is. You can ask me my favorite food is. You can ask me whatever. Let's do it. Rapid questions. Let's go. I'm ready. I'm waiting on y'all. I'm waiting on y'all. Uh, beyond the gray media says you inspire a lot of us greater on channel. Be real. Appreciate it, dude. Likewise, likewise. I appreciate everybody here. I really do. Um. Have you seen the movie Teddy Told Me To? It's a masterpiece. I have not, Mason. I have not seen Teddy Told Me To. I have to look that one up as well. I'll look that one up in a little bit. Uh, I forgot about that place too. I want to say FYE was way through 2012 when I was buying these movies for the first time and seeing them the first time. I love it. Yeah, I did too. Uh, my favorite killer clown. That's a great question. My favorite killer clown is actually um Tim Curry. I don't think you'll ever beat Tim Curry. With that Jersey accent. You'll never beat that. Tim Curry is the greatest killer clown of all time. I love. I love Pennywise. I love art. I like this art. I mean, I like this Pennywise too, but I think Tim Curry is they he 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 here's the thing that I don't think people realize. Okay, listen to me. They just put makeup on Tim Curry. That's all they did. Everything about that character that you love was an actor acting. You can't outdo Tim Curry. And that's the bottom line. Now, no disrespect to Bill and his movies. I love them. It's a great, different approach to the character, but Tim Curry is a generational talent. You can't outdo what Tim Curry did. All they did was put makeup on him. That was it. Everything that was scary about that character was a performer. Anyway, let's continue. If the Owen Hart footage ever got released, would you watch it? You know, Killer Pizza, I I part of me wants to dodge that question, but I'm going to answer the question and I'm gonna tell you why I want to dodge it because there's no right answer, right? If I say no, then it's like, oh, you're a liar. Of course you would. And if I say yes, it could be taken away like, well, wouldn't that be disrespectful? Um, I think the curiosity factor of just seeing what poor Owen went through is something I think about a lot. I think a lot of wrestling fans think about a lot. And the reason I would want to see it is because the I'll I'll tell you this. Okay, I will answer the question. The reason I think I would want to see it is because I want to see how close how close the testimony was of the Jerry Lawlers, of the Mike Kyoto's that were in. I think it was Mike Kyoto. I could. It could have been a different route. It could have been a different ref. It might have been a different ref, but if not, I would want to see how close the situation was to what those two guys recalled about the incident. Um. It would be tough to watch, but you know, I think a lot of us, I think a lot of us would be curious to see it. And but not in a disrespectful way like, oh, yeah, I want to see it. It's just like, no, I I want to see what happened to Owen, you know? So I think the answer is yes, but not in a way that would make me seem like I am would get a kick out of it. It would truly just to see how close the testimony was of what these guys that saw it. You know, what it what what? Because I'm sure they have it on video locked in a vault, you know? Top three Mountain Dew flavors. Great question. Um. I love regular Mountain Dew. I love white out, but the greatest of all time without question, hesitation or doubt uh, is Code Red. What's the most expensive physical media item you own? That's a good question, Ben Grimm. I don't know that I could answer it off the top of my head. I mean, probably one of the box sets, Ben. It's kind of a boring answer, but like probably the supernatural Blu-ray box set is probably one of them, right? Uh, yeah, it might be that. That was like 160 bucks. You know, for that box set. Um. It's probably a boring answer like that, Ben. I'm sorry. It's a boring answer, but that's probably it. Yeah, that's that's probably something something like that, Ben. What's your favorite Argento film right now? It's always gonna be the Creepers Cut of Phenomena, landfill joy. My favorite food is pizza. I'm a pizza fanatic. I love uh, I love pan crust. I love pan pizzas. Probably. Favorite movie theater experience? Favorite new release from all labels? Uh, it's gonna take me a long time to do all labels. I'll give you my favorite release from let's let's go with like Arrow. My favorite release from Arrow is Robocop. The Robocop release was sensational. Uh, but I also love their box sets. I tell you what, I think it was Saturn video kind of put me on a coffin Joe. And I really like the Coffin Joe box set. That's a great box set. I think it's probably one of the best done box sets in terms of packaging and acquiring a number of movies. Uh, and some of those movies are downright disturbing. So I'm gonna go with Coffin Joe. I'm gonna strike Robocop. I'm gonna go with Coffin Joe as their best box set. Favorite movie theater experience? Definitely uh, The Strangers was one of them. Um, and Rob Zombie's Halloween was also a blast with me and my friends. We just had such a good time. Chud, man, Chud. I love Chud. John Goodman is a cop. Come on now. I thought you knew me, Horrorhound 85. I love extra, but no, for real, Chud is a classic, classic. Real question. Do you ever get pushed back from your significant other for the money in the room our physical media collection stakes? No, I'm very lucky. I mean, I have my room here. I have my studio rooms, but the rest of the house Midnight Geek is all Sydney. She she's she I don't have a say in anything outside of this, my studios. So no, I'm very lucky. And fortunately, Midnight Geek, I'm at a place where my ad revenue is is helping kind of keep up with the hobby and and also, you know, I am getting to the point where some companies uh, are wanting to give me review copy stuff. Um, which is very nice. There's no, I don't. It's not something that I don't think anybody would want to deny. Yeah, it's nice that I'm able to review the Paramount scares box set for you guys early. So you can decide, okay, I don't want that or okay, I okay, I do want that. So you know, the 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 growth of the YouTube channel has been very helpful, Midnight Geek. It really has. Um. So yeah, it's I'm in an okay position with that. I'll watch the remake. Some people told me they liked the remake. I I'll watch it. I don't know if I'll buy it, but I'll watch it. Movie Den, how are you? It's good to see you. Better late than never. We're going for a few more minutes, Movie Den. Have you ever seen The Redeemer, AKA Clash, Reunion, Massacre? You know what's Twisted Trucker? I want to say I saw that at my video rental store today when I was buying shrooms. Have you ever seen The Redeemer, AKA Clash, Reunion, Massacre? You know what's Twisted Trucker? I want to say I saw that at my video rental store today when I was buying shrooms. I don't think I've seen that though. I think it will. I think it will. I, I am not interested in Joker two. No disrespect. I, I, it's not my style that those kinds of movies. I'm not interested in it. I don't think I have nuclear. Uh. Hit me up on, oh, by the way, guys, go to. I'm, I'm still using Instagram. I'm just not spending as much time on there or getting to DMs as fast. I'm taking a step back because I was getting addicted to using Instagram. Do me a favor, guys. If you want to get in touch with me. Uh, this is an app that I can get on and not, not doom scroll at all. And I can get on, I can respond quicker. Go to Facebook. I know, I know, nobody really likes Facebook as much. Go to Facebook and type in Planet CHH. Go follow the Planet CHH page. You guys will get. Uh, um, you guys will get announcements from me on there. You'll get the uh. I'll link you for new videos is coming out. And if you want to message me on there, I can get to you faster on Facebook. We do have a super chat. Let's get to that. We have. Uh, Milo Fedor with a $10, is it Euro? Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Let me give you a little something.
I feel like people sleep.
Thank you so much for the super chats. Thank you, Broke Boogeyman. Love the channel. Inspiring dude. Listen. If I can do just what I have done in a, like, it's not much, but I'm proud of it, dude. I'm telling you, I'm, I am literally no better than anybody. That's the truth. I'm not better than anybody, man. You can look at me and clearly see that. But you know what? If you, if you go for it, dude, you'd be surprised what you can do. You'd be surprised what you can do. That's the, that's the reality. Um. We still got a hundred and thirty-five people in here. We can keep it going for a few minutes, guys. I'm fine with that. Sing Smashing Pumpkins in Portland on Wednesday with Green Day. Favorite song from melancholy. Excellent. Awesome. I'm not big into Green Day that much, but Pumpkins is amazing. I hope you have a great time. Tell Billy I said what's up. NWA, Billy's running the NWA. Davy Death Ray, how are you Davy Death Ray? What's happening, Christian? How's everyone in the chat doing tonight? Are you a fan of the collector films? No, I was talking to Nick about that all back. I'm not really a fan. I think the first one was okay from what I remember, but I really hated the sequel. So. Uh, let's see. So are you going to be picking up the one-on-one film slumber party massacre that just got released? Are you sticking with the screen factor releases? I've already got the 4K of one and two. I'm going to be passing on that movie then. I'm going to be passing. I am not, I get, it's funny how this keeps getting brought up. I am not a Slipknot. I am not a Slipknot guy. Um. I, I don't like, I don't enjoy much Slipknot. There's a few songs I can get behind, but overall I am not a Slipknot guy. Just got corn and Gojira tickets for next month. Pretty pumped. Dude, that sounds like a concert. Holy crap. Giador les support physi, physi, I think what this is is. Support physical media. Which thank you, Milo. Thank you so much, dude. I appreciate that. Um. The scariest Freddy is definitely part two, part two. Part two. Um. I want slumber party three on 4K so bad. Boom. I'm sorry, I can't like every band. You know, I can't like every movie despite the fact that there is always going to be. Uh, people on here that think I like every movie, which is fine. There's worse things to be criticized about on YouTube than Christian likes too many movies. You know, there's a lot worse things I can be criticized for. Does Alice Cooper's faith make him even cooler? I think it does. That's actually a good point, Davy. I'm, I'm, I'm going to give you an honest answer about this. I respect anybody that will fully stand on what they believe in. I had this conversation with Nick. I respect vegans even more than vegetarians. Not that I have disrespect for vegetarians, but I respect the fact that vegans say, no, 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 no. You're just as bad if you eat animal-based products. I'm, I'm not touching it because I'm against, you know. I resp, I don't agree with it. I'm a meat eater, but I respect the validity of that. So do, if, if Alice was an atheist and he stood on that and he was like, no, 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 I'm an atheist. The way Rob Zombie is, Rob Zombie's an atheist and he stands on that. He's like, no, there is no God. I don't believe in a God, blah, blah, blah. He stands on what he believes in. I respect that a hundred percent. Uh, do I think it makes Alice cooler? Sure. I mean, am I a Christian? I, I think I am. I mean, besides my name, I'm not very religious. But I definitely live my best life that I can. I try to treat people with as much respect as possible. And I. You know, I pray that there really is something after our, our. When we pass. So I, I, I'd like to believe, right? So I, I love Alice for the person he is, the way he treats people, the way he's treated opening acts throughout the years. The way he's uh held a marriage for as long as he had, which is also, you know, a guy that he's compassionate. And he's a guy that Alice is a guy that he. He stands on what he thinks and believes in, and I just think that's amazing. So that's why he's on me. I'm, 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 I'm the biggest Alice Cooper fan in the world and I can't wait to see him live again. I've been telling people to see him live as, as often as he can. So I'm, I'm, I think it is cool. I am not an Ice Nine Kills fan. No disrespect to the band. Uh, I've tried listening to them. It's just not exactly my cup of tea. I'm a picky guy, like, like crazy spray can. If you were to say, Christian, are you a fan of the Michael Graves era of the Misfits? I would not shut up for thirty solid minutes about how much I love Famous Monsters. Mike, what's going on, Mike? Ready for the Vince McMahon dot com out on the twenty-fifth. Being a wrestling fan during the Attitude Era, it's really wild to see all this roll out. Mike. I, I'm going to keep it brief because I am not, I am so obsessed with this documentary about to come out. I will literally talk for another hour and thirty minutes about the Mr. McMahon documentary. Uh, I am very excited to see this. I think. I think there's going to be life before seeing this doc, Mike, and I think there's going to be life after seeing this doc. What I mean by that is when we watch this, we are going to learn and hear about things that we never knew before, and it's going to affect a lot of us. So I truly can't emphasize how. Much anticipation I have to see this as bad and as dark as some of these things we learn might be. So yes, Mike, to answer the question, I am. Waiting with bated breath for the documentary. This is a great question. Thoughts on New Order, The Smiths, Deep Pash Mode. I can tell you this, out of the three bands, The Smiths is my favorite. Of the three. I love The Smiths. I'm a big Morrissey Mark. I love his voice, very polarizing voice. I am a huge fan. Of The Smiths. I like New Order and I love Depeche Mode as well. I love the Ice Cream Man, classic. I, I want. Y'all are nuts. Oh, man. Oh, yeah, Sean, I, and that's, that's fair as well. Not all vegetarians are on because of cruelty for so much as a health preference. Uh, definitely, definitely true. And I, I didn't, I didn't mean to broad stroke the whole thing. But my point is like when people, as long as it's not something that is cruel or inhumane to society. You know, like. Somebody that's has a very hateful mindset, if you get my drift, that they stand on those principles. Like, I don't respect that, but for people to go in a route that was like, no, like, I'm not touching this. I, I respect that kind of stuff, you know? But I understand what you're saying right there as well. Hollywood Undead is not music. I've never been a fan of Hollywood Undead. I don't like them at all. I think that's a silly band. Linkin Park is one of the most iconic bands from that, from the nu metal era. So yeah, I like Linkin Park. I would love that. I would love that so much. Uh, do you think Halloween five poster ripped off Friday? Um. That's actually a good question. Yes and no. I don't think it was intentionally ripped off. But it is similar for sure. But I don't think it was intentionally. They do something cool. They make her clown suit become part of the knife. So no, it's different enough. Very random, but the other day was I was supposed to try to find an evil bong DVD. Hey, man, that's awesome. That's awesome. Pick up that evil bong on DVD. Do you think we'll get Freddie and or Jason on the big screen before the decade is over? The answer is yes. I think the answer is yes. It's only twenty twenty-four. I think by twenty thirty, we'll have some, something for sure. Famous monsters saw them on McGuire that went across the street to Monday Nitro and costumes priceless. Listen, guys, okay, we've gone an hour and twenty. I know when I need to leave the party and not overstay my welcome. I had a blast tonight. If you guys want to do me a favor, drop a like on this if you have not already. If you want to become a patron, guys, oh, two things. Uh, if you want to pick up one of our remaining Beetlejuice candles, go to youneedacandles.com and pick up one of our Beetlejuice candles. You order it tonight, I will have it shipped by tomorrow. I am that fast. I take my shipping very seriously. If you haven't tried us on You Need A Candles, give us a shot. As a matter of fact, let me get the Etsy store pulled up for you guys real quick. I want you guys to check us out. Let's see. I'm going to drop the uh URL in the chat. Guys, check us out. Uh, nobody makes candles uh last as long or smell as good as what we do. We will destroy anything you buy in the store. And not only that, we have cool. Um, movie-based candles, stuff that's really nice, these gorgeous glass jars that we got, the, we sold out of the Monster cereal one, but the, we have a few left of the Beetlejuice. The, my wife created these gorgeous stickers to put on that are on the candles. It's a gorgeous, thick. Um, foggy green glass that it comes in, guys. Don't sleep on those candles because once those are gone, they are gone. So give us a shot and try us out on youneedacandles.com. I dropped it down below. Um. And uh, yeah, so check that out. And not only that, guys, uh, if you want to try out the Patreon. I promise you, you will have more videos, early access than you can shake a stick at. I just asked my patrons. They get a lot of early stuff. So guys, check us out on Etsy. Try us out on You Need A Candles. Follow us on Instagram for You Need A Candles. Um, follow the Planet CHH page on Facebook. Go follow that. I know I'm giving you guys a lot of directions, but listen. Thank you, guys. Give it your all, whatever you're doing. Give it your all. As we approach thirty K, I'm reflecting on. The decision to take responsibility. And not looking and not, not point fingers at other people and ask why their channel is growing and mine is not. I took responsibility. And I gave it hell. And I'm about to hit thirty K, which is not a lot, but for me, it's a huge thing. And I'm just so proud. Of my audience for sticking with me and I'm so proud of what we've been able to accomplish. So. God bless you, guys. I want y'all to have a great weekend. I really do. Be safe. If you drink, don't drive. Get an Uber or um get somebody to get you. Don't do silly things, guys. Life is short. Uh, let's mitigate any kind of silly risk we can have in, in terms of danger and things like that. Go see your favorite bands. Go see artists because they're, some of these legends are getting older. Uh, some of them are not going to be around forever. And live life, live life. Don't look at, don't look back and have a ton of regret. Don't look back and wonder. Damn it, you know what? I should have gone to that convention because now they're not even doing it anymore. Or you know what? Damn it, my, my friends went to this and I passed on it. Now I want to go next year and now they're not going. Stop. Live life, enjoy each day and try to get something out of it. God bless you, guys. Good night and I'll see y'all next time.